All right, I would like to call to order for Tuesday, June 11th, Committee of the Whole. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. First on our agenda, we've got PL 49-19 by Mayor Aleo to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract between the County of Cataragus and the City of Oleen for the Department of Aging, Senior Wellness, and Nutrition Program cycle. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, John. This contract, the contract will run from June 1st, 2019 through May 31st, 2021. The county will pay us $5,304.60 per year to run the Senior Wellness and Nutrition Program out of the John D. Yask community. So this is a renewal on the past contract, and I believe there's a slight increase, about 3% increase.
That remains constant though over that time, that two-year timeframe?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none. Could I get a sponsor, please? Sponsored by Alderman Witt. Seconded by Alderman Adriano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, and as referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. Next, we have PL 50-19 by Mayor Aleo that the Common Council is lead agency declares the well 18, well 37, 38, and water filtration plant improvement project a type 2 action, which is not subject to review under SEACRA, and it will not result in a significant impact on the environment. Mr. Mayor?
This is in relation to the filtration improvement project that we've been working on, which is currently in review by DOH. Before we go to construction, we wanted to include the SEACRA. It's a type 2 action, it's a short form. I pleaded that and submitted it for your approval, and I determined that there was minimal to no impact from that project.
Okay, and what's the timeline on that?
On the project?
Yeah.
We're hoping to bid in construction in the fall, and then go into winter and spring.
Okay. All right, so we, this is one that we knew was coming down the pipeline. Any comments or questions on this project? Okay, seeing none. Could I get a sponsor, please?
Sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Witt. Seconded by Alderman George. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. This too is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. Next, we've got PL 51-19 by Mayor Aleo to authorize the mayor to sign and submit grant applications to the Federal Aviation Administration for grant funding associated with the design portion of the runway 4-22 rehabilitation project and the design portion of the SRE building pavement rehabilitation project. Mayor?
I provided you with a four-year plan for FAA grant funding at the Cataragus Air Force. We worked with a consultant to develop this plan. They really lead it with our input. Come around to the next round of grants, which is fiscal year 2019, those two design We need to submit the grant applications this month, so I'm asking permission to submit those. Our local match is $17,000. That could be part of this year's budget. The design and study generally takes six to 10 months, so some of that money I plan to either pay for our own budget or an excrete budget. And just looking ahead, that four-year plan really takes care of all the pavement on the airport and replacement of it. It's roughly $6 million in projects and $300,000 in matching.
For 2019, Bob, sorry. For 2019, just while I'm reading this right out, $340,000 total project cost, our local match is just $17,000.
Five percent.
Five percent.
And all I'm asking for at this point is, you know, the application for fiscal year 2019.
Bob, down the road in 2021 and 2022, those are pretty big bills for our local match. Do we have a plan or will we cross that bridge when we come to it?
I think it's more of a cross that bridge when we come to it type of thing, pronouncing. I think these are worthwhile, even if we talk about a plan for the airport long-term. If you look at the condition of the pavement up there, if we ever want to continue to run the airport long-term, we're going to want to replace the pavement under these programs because the amount to say open again in 20 years or even continue to run it without FAA funding would obviously be incredibly expensive to replace all the pavement and stuff.
Bob, do you know by chance with these grants, if we got them and accepted them, how many years we're on the hook for then?
They have a formula. Every year you, if you, and I don't know if it's, if you shut the airport down or if you, and I believe that those are the terms, every year is roughly 5% less that you would have to pay the grant back. I guess I'll try and explain that again. So if we take $2 million from them in 2021, every year after that is 5% less for 20 years that we would have to pay them back, right, if we were to shutter the airport?
So it's prorated over 20 years?
Correct.
Right? I mean, I think it's pretty clear as far as what my concerns are with the airport and the sustainability, the longevity of that facility. Because decisions that we make now, right, by accepting and we all think that the FAA grants are amazing because we only have to kick in 5%, but what it signs us up for is to keep that facility open for another 20 years. So we're not only making decisions that impact today, but impact the next generation that are going to have to be dealing with the same possible issues, which are we're losing $100,000 to $150,000 a year on that facility. And maybe it is, we can agree to disagree whether or not it's an economic driver for the City of Oleen, but without partnerships with the Cataragus County, some sort of, I've yet to hear any sort of long-term sustainable strategic plan, how this facility is going to continue working and operating for the next 20 years. And that's my concern. Okay? When the city, if the city doesn't turn and we go from 15,000 to 10,000 people or to 5,000 people, at what point do we no longer say we need to keep an airport up and running? And how much can we continue to ask our taxpayers to subsidize that program? So these are my concerns. I will, I will obviously be voting no on this. I understand and appreciate where Bob's coming from, where Bill's coming from. You guys at this point are tasked with keeping this place up and running, but I've yet to hear any sort of long-term, well, here's a potential solution, whether it's a joint venture with the county or whatever. I can't in good faith continue to sign this up for, I mean, now I'm looking at a four-year plan where we're going to be essentially kicking in, what, $300,000? And that's our match, right? And for $5 million or $4 million worth of projects? I mean, this is, you know, try to just, as you go into this, understand the, you know, what impact it could have down the road.
I was just going to say, you know, over the years, and I've been here a few years, we've always tried to port the county in. Whenever we have discussions or tours or anything going on at the airport, or whenever we have the discussion of why should we keep it going, there are people around the county that'll say, well, it's not just Oleen, it's others in the county that benefit. But I've yet to see any of them step up, as John just pointed out. And I think at some point, the county, it behooves them to do it because it's not just Oleen that benefits from that airport, it's the county does. And I think they've been silent and sitting on the sidelines for far too long, and I think we really need to push them to do something.
And meanwhile, they brought in how much in, they're put into their fund balance this year?
Yeah.
And they can't afford to help pay for a county airport?
My only thought is, if we were to go down that road, how deep are we in? If this is four years and we're at, what, $4 million? Now, given that a lot of that is pedaling backwards, 5% each year for the last, but the last 20 years, let's say every year I've been on the council, we've done something at the airport that implied FAA funding. So we're kind of at this between a rock and a hard place because we're, we're already into it for at least 20 years' worth of stuff. And sure, we sign up for something today, if we don't go ahead with the stuff we're in on, we can't maintain the airport to continue to support, to see out those other things that are already in the barrel. And then all of a sudden, the airport can't exist in five years from now, and we have to end up paying back 15 years' worth of stuff we've signed up for.
I, I want to say maybe it was a year or two ago that I looked into this and, you know, trying to take a look at how much the city is obligated or tied to from previous FAA funding. And, you know, the idea of closing up shop and walking away from the facility tomorrow is not doable. But 12 years down the road, it might be doable, right? And that's where, that's the type of strategic, well, maybe that's the time, unless there's some sort of major turnaround for that facility, maybe that's the time, right? But we can't continue signing up to take out another $4 million. But at the same time, how do you keep it running for the next 12 years? So yeah, you're, you're right, you're not wrong, Kevin. I mean, you are between a rock and a hard place.
I don't think anybody would say on this council that we don't need help with the airport, but my question would be is how far are we away from, if we don't do some maintenance on the runway, how far are we away from not being able to utilize the facility? Based on FAA regulations or some kind of stipulation with the grade of the pavement?
I think it's difficult to say. I mean, I could certainly show you pictures of large cracks in the runway if it's in poor shape.
How often do they, how often do we get inspected in that regard?
Annually.
Annually?
Yeah.
So up until this point, it's been passable?
Right, right. So it is a difficult situation if you were to have an exit strategy. How long can that runway go? How can we replace it functionally?
Action seal?
If we punt on this now, can we, I mean, is this a one-time opportunity? We voted this down, so we don't want to do this?
I really don't know, honestly. I don't know the exit strategy. I haven't asked those questions yet. I rely on our consultants.
Here's a question for you. Lindy and John brought up a good point about the county. Could the county take out these grants and assume the match?
County gives $17,000 actually every year, so because of the decreased budget at the airport, it was something we were going to ask them. They like, they asked us to provide something that we're going to spend the money on, they don't want to just throw it in our, in our budget. So this is something that could certainly be presented to them.
Well, I find $17,000 offensive if we're spending the kind of money we spend, so I guess back to my question is, could you, could the county take out a grant instead of it being city of Oleen, and they assume the $300,000 match and get the $6 million in grants?
But does that even matter at this point? I mean, this is on the resolution today.
But if you're saying you want to punt it down the road, can the county come around and give advice to do the project?
You know, and back to the meetings we've had in the past, if you look at the room, the folks that come to support the airport and, you know, and I know most of these people, and very few of them live in Oleen, you know, they don't even live there. And that's why I just think that the county really needs to step up. And it shouldn't be up to our little municipality to just take this burden on year after year and to go begging the county for $17,000 a year, which is really insulting.
Yeah.
I just think we really need to have serious talk with the county legislators or administrator because I don't think we can do this indefinitely. And I think John brought up a good point, you know, if we continue to lose population, we're paying for something that very few of our residents use, and yet we're liable for it. We're liable if there were ever an accident up there, we're liable for it. When I took my NIMs, my NIMs training, one of the disasters that we discussed was the airport. You know, so there's, there's so much liability on us, and yet nobody's helping us with a burden of it financially.
Is that true? Do we assume liability if there's a plane crash up there? Is that?
No. Who do you think's going to show up? Hinsdale Fire Department or Issuway? I don't think they have one. It's going to be Oleen. It's our airport.
I mean, for, just for the record, so our budget for the airport is $250,000 in the 1920, and so the county gives us $17,000, which is 6.8%, right? And pretty sure their name's on that sign too, right?
Sign rental space?
I just, I don't know. I'm just one of seven, and I have a really tough time just voting in support of a, an organization, a facility that just isn't sustainable. Vince Volpe's not flying in and out of there anymore.
Those are a timeframe on this grant that would have to be submitted by?
Unfortunately, the timeframe is short. Waiting two weeks would be very difficult.
When was this application opened? Since there's a short, I mean, did it open and we just waited to apply for it, or we just found out about it, or?
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of steps with pre-application and other checklists and things, and we go for your plan, and then this is the grant application period. It all happens, everything's ready to go.
If we okay you to go for the grant and you get it, do we have to vote to accept it? Or do you just accept it?
Yeah, we still have to vote to accept it, don't we, Bob? If we are approved for the grant?
This is, this is, oh, this is to submit the grant application? Yeah.
So I'm, I mean, I'm kind of like running with you guys, but in leaning towards the, you know, we need to sit down and come up with a long-term sustainability project, or are we, you know, exiting the airport? But to hastily say we're going to vote this one down, I mean, out of all the things on this four-year plan, $300,000 is a lot easier to swallow in a 20-year payback than the remaining $4.5 million. So I would be okay with voting yes to approve this for the, at least the grant application, and maybe getting the work sooner rather than later on, coming up with a long-term plan. If we don't make it to 2020, we can say no to all that stuff then, but at least we've had a year to think about it.
Bob, have we ever, if you'd be near, have we recently reached out to Rapid Air Force or Jamesport or Jameson and just seen how they, I mean, they advertise?
They have charters, right?
Rapid Air has a charter. You know, and that's, we don't have that. The problem is, we've been trying for years to get a full-time person up at the airport that can do this, and we don't have anyone that can do this. We have part-time people up there that try to sustain, you know, just the maintenance and that. So the county has turned this down many, many times. We've asked for help on the airport. We need to get the county more, I agree, we need to get the county more involved here. Yeah, I believe they put $25 million into their, they were, their fund balance.
Right.
So, you know, we've asked for a position, we've asked for help with this, and every year it just turns down, we get our $17,000, and that's it.
And how, and, well, you might know better than I. I mean, if it comes down to it, Bill, what would the county say if we, we got to a point where we said, we can't keep it up and running anymore?
Well, that's, it's coming to an end.
Deficit financing?
I think they've already committed a little bit inside.
But, I mean, is that, is that what the truth is, or do they know, well, we're going to just take care of it? And, you know, or they're bluffing? I mean, it just, I don't know.
So back to my question, Bob. So if we go ahead and approve the grant and you get it, then we have to approve accepting the grant, correct? It's not just going to be accepted?
Right.
Right?
But I mean, Kevin does offer a valid, you know, a valid point that we're talking about just the $17,000 or $340,000, but that starts 20 years ticking on $340,000 potential payback, you know? So it's not the entire, you know, whatever, $4 million today. And it does get the runway usable, safe, right?
But it's usable now, though, isn't it?
But I think he's saying there's safety concerns. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, we did some crack filling last year, and we spent, you know, $5,000 to $6,000 dollars and did it over. Maybe it's time for the council to go right up there and see for themselves, you know, and not just making it up. The airport in general is in pretty good shape as far as facilities and some of the other grants that were passed, the pavement, you know, that's why I think this four-year plan is focusing on the pavement. It really does need to be played.
Can I suggest, and I don't think anyone's judging you, or I hope you're not being thankful of being mean about this, we're asking good questions. Maybe it's time when it's not a Tuesday night, it's not a Wednesday night, we meet on a Thursday night, and all the county legislators and all the city of Oleen Common Council and the administrator, and we all meet at the airport and put all of our heads together and say, here we go.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, you know, on paper, but I think you'll get, I, no, I mean, I'm just saying I think you'll get all seven of us to show up and one or two maybe local Oleen legislators to show up.
Time Sarah will be there.
Sure.
Radio will be there.
I just, I, it's one of those things that the $17,000 in their budget every year kind of goes to show how much enthusiasm they have for the airport regardless of an invitation. Just, just throwing that out there as the devil's advocate.
I just think we need to tell them we can't do it by ourselves, and I think we need to set time up for meeting and sit down and say, listen, either you're going to help us, or we're just going to battle out.
And again, I mean, I know we're kind of beating a dead horse, but isn't this the whole point of like the whole shared services and the whole push of New York State that, you know, we're supposed to combine forces? It just is, it's asinine to think that the City of Oleen with 15,000 people can continue to manage a quarter of a million facility and lose $100,000 to $150,000 a year.
The other thing is when we're inviting people, invite the Issuway Town Board, because God knows they're-
And then we still pay taxes, correct?
Yeah.
Right, Bill? Or we don't?
Issuway School.
Not to the county. So that's nice.
Dude, that's beautiful.
We have an agreement with the county for now.
But a school district?
We pay to the Hinsdale School District and we pay to the town of Issuway.
Yeah, so they need to be invited as well.
Okay. I like that idea.
It's plan of future.
Anything else?
I would, I would echo Kevin's comments about working through it this year, pushing forward on the application, but then the field trip sounded like an excellent idea.
Sooner than later.
Can we bring a beer?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing else, we do need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Alderman Doherty. Need a second. Seconded by Alderman George. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, so motion is referred to tonight's regular meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second is made by Alderman Adriano. All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council for Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt. Alderman Adriano. Alderman Gonzalez.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman George.
Here.
Please rise for the invocation.
God grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. We know that when we ask for wisdom, you give generously to all without finding fault. Grant us the wisdom as we make decisions that affect all among us. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Capitol for which this stands. One nation, under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleen Common Council was held on Tuesday, May 20th, 2019 at 6:35 PM. Present, Alderman Crawford, Alderman Witt, Alderman Adriano, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Doherty, Alderman Smith, and Alderman George.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Could I get a second, please?
Sir.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries committee reports and unfinished council business.
We have none.
Communications from the mayor. Misalines, communications?
We have none.
City official reports?
None.
And proposed legislation and referrals.
PL 49-19 by Mayor Aleo referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, June 11th, 2019 by Council President. PL 50-19 by Mayor Aleo referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, June 11th, 2019 by Council President. PL 51-19 referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, June 11th, 2019 by Council President. PL 52-19 by Mayor Aleo referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, Tuesday, June 25th, 2019 by Council President. PL 53-19 by Alderman Crawford referred to regular meeting Tuesday, June 25th, 2019 for resolution by Council President. PL 54-19 by Mayor Aleo referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, June 25th, 2019 by Council President.
All right, before entering public comment, I'd like to give the opportunity to any of the aldermen to speak at this time. Seeing nothing, will the clerk please read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the Common Council regular meeting is established to provide the members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views of both their concerns or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, Common Council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right, at this time, I will open public comment. Please approach the podium, state your name and address. You'll have five minutes.
Now, I have to talk, I have a very topic to discuss. Uh, simply about the airport. This actually makes what I was going to say more relevant. You know, as we've seen, over the last week, we got notification that Oleen wholesale, we all went over the salt, you know, they had to try to get down. Now, within the last eight years, between, so here, Oleen had a lot of 174 people. Uh, no, yeah, 174 people. ABX plus 60 people, AMC plus 25 people, and the, oh, 140, 140 people. Then again, it's all of 300, 439 people. Now, that's far, actually, that's why it's called the internet. Now, within the wholesale, Oleen wholesale, which had 100 plus, maybe 150 people. My question to you is, really simple, who is responsible for going out and looking to place a commander? Who can access leading jobs out of this area? Where can you see jobs out of this area? We had access, needing jobs out of this area, we're having jobs out of this area. Isn't the, isn't the Chamber of Commerce, isn't the city, the city's citizens that buy services? It's that just because of, it's that in whole. It's also Fortville, it's Allagay, it's, uh, Hinsdale. We are the hub of the whole community. It's irony brought up because the airport shut down the airport. The airport is one of the selling points of this community. We have a good business, we have a good account. We have a state, uh, medical facility. Why isn't anybody promoting this type of square? I know that, uh, from what I hear, people will put this opening up at cost seven, Manchester. And they have, like, you know, a hundred thousand people. A hundred of those people would be, a hundred of those jobs would be really nice down here. It wouldn't be possible. I love that it's a Cat Roberts County Economic Development Agency. Could you, could you get people together, the top of our senate, the city of Olean, and you let them along with people from Hinsdale, Fortville, Allagay, try to figure out what we have to do to bring the jobs back? Because if it continues like this, if it continues like that, you know, it's going to be, I hate to say this, like, the federal would just end up being a hole. I mean, I've heard other words used that I must not be able to say, but in reality, that something has to be done. I don't know. I don't believe it, okay? I don't know who's in charge of it, who's supposed to do what, who's supposed to bring the jobs in there? I know the, uh, the county through the Economic Development Agency, people are supposed to, are they out there looking for them? We are the hub. The city of Olean is the hub for the south, south central section of Cat Roberts County. The airport is called the Cat Roberts, Olean Airport, not the Olean and Cat Roberts Airport. Case in point, maybe they should be all taken, but just change the name around. That would get their attention. But what I'm saying is, I'm just wondering who's responsible, is it possible to get all the people together and input? To find out what you have to do, what we have to do, not what you have to do, what we have to do as a community, and not just the community of the city of Olean, but the whole community, the county included. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anyone else?
I have a comment. I would say that if anybody wanted to serve in any public body and was an elected official, especially on this council, it would behoove them to know that themselves.
Point taken? Anyone else? Anyone else? Alderman Smith? No?
Been on the fine.
This is, this is, this is usually where you, you, you talk about New York State. I, I just figured I, no?
I have been a little grumpy about it lately. I do want to make a comment on the airport.
Oh, okay.
Since you asked me.
Please.
Everyone here was right tonight. Uh, it's bleeding us. But I, I look at the airport kind of big picture. I don't own an airplane, I don't fly, I don't have a vested interest in the airport. And the point has been made that a very small percentage of the community actually uses the airport. That is very true. However, a very small percentage of any community uses any airport. There's only a small group of people that are pilots. Unless your airport has a commercial hub like Bradford or Buffalo, or does Jameson have a hub? I don't know. Uh, so that being said, all airports are underutilized by the majority of the population. That doesn't make them unimportant. It also, they're, as much as they are utilitarian, they're also symbolic. They're symbolic of prosperity. And I feel like, I sense that we're about to play a game of chicken with the county and see who blinks. Uh, we better be careful because, uh, we don't want to blink first. Because that airport is symbolic of prosperity in Olean and this county. And it would be a devastating blow, uh, to people who don't even use it to shut that thing down. Uh, it would just, the perception of Olean losing its airport would be devastating. So I'm saying let's proceed with caution.
And, and you, and you know, I mean, I, I value that, Nate, and I, I think you make a, you make a strong point there. And, uh, the, the kicker is the timing of how these F E A grants work, right? The fact that we sign up for twenty years, and twenty years from now, there may no longer be fifteen thousand people, it might be under ten thousand people. And at what point, you can have this wonderful symbol of prosperity, but at what point, you got to make that tough call? And, and you can't do it overnight, right? You can't just wake up and say, okay, time to shut it down. Oh, wait, we got to pay back fifteen million dollars to the F A A. Um, and that's the kicker, right? And, and that's where, uh, we really do need to plead, I think, to, to get some assistance and create a joint venture or shared service with, with the county. I mean, that's the only thing that makes sustainable sense.
I couldn't agree anymore. I can't believe they got away all these years giving us peanuts for this thing. They need frog marge to their checkbook.
Okay, at this time I will, uh, call the public comment. Oh, do you have, Larry? No? You're good? I thought you were raising your hand. I thought you were going to speak.
Can I say one more thing? Very simple.
Please, 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 Kevin.
But I know the traffic goes in and out of there. I built a house at the bottom of the hill. This is many years ago. My brother still lives on that road. So I know there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there. I also know the airport is sorry. I'm not to be a little of the airport. I'm just saying it because you don't have the jobs here or the employees here. You can't shut it down because that is the other that is used to evolve the airport. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, at this time I will call the public comment section quote. On to finance and bills.
We have none.
And resolutions?
Resolution forty-seven dash nineteen, P L forty-eight dash nineteen, to authorize the removal of a tree located at one zero one five Seneca Street by the property owner with the condition that the property owner also repair and replace the sidewalk above on the tree.
So Alderman Adriano?
Yes, I have to make a motion to postpone this indefinitely.
Do we need a suspension of the rules or any of that type of stuff? Can we just make that motion?
Okay, just before we break out.
So we can make a motion to postpone it definitely?
So that, the question of the voter is now, correct?
Correct. Okay.
So she can make a motion to postpone it definitely?
Okay, all right. So a motion's been made. I'll go ahead and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, resolutions postponed.
Resolution forty-nine dash nineteen, P L forty-seven dash nineteen, to amend the city of Olean Code of Audiences, Section twenty-four dash one thirty-four, to prohibit parking and standing on the north side of East Spring Street for a distance of twenty-five feet east and west from the existing crosswalk, crosswalk by the main entrance to Isidio Elementary School.
Okay, uh, this is Alderman Adriano, right?
I'm not able to discuss or be part of the discussion and I have to abstain from this because it involves the school.
Okay.
But it was discussed.
Okay. Um, so at this time, I just, I guess, for my clarification, if somebody does know, does this prevent, does this prevent parking on either side? Just on one side? Okay. All right, uh, any comments or questions?
Bob, I think.
Oh, Bob?
No, sorry.
You're good?
Oh, you distracted me.
Okay. Okay, good thing we're not televised tonight. Okay, so this is like, uh, you know, an auction. Somebody raises their arm. Okay, so, um, seeing none, um, I'll go ahead and sponsor. Could I get a second, please? Seconded by Alderman Witt. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Adriano?
I understand.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman George?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries five to, six to zero and one abstain.
So that's, uh, that's a okay abstention, right?
She put it on the record.
Okay, it's on the record. Very good. Um.
Resolution fifty dash nineteen, P L forty-nine dash nineteen by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Adriano. Resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract between the county of Cataragus and the city of Olean for the Department of Aging Senior Wellness and Nutrition Program site.
Okay, discussed in committee of the whole. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Adriano?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman George?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution fifty-one dash nineteen, P L fifty dash nineteen by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman George, that the common council as lead agency declares that the well eighteen, well thirty-seven dash thirty-eight and water filtration plant, uh, plant improvement project is a type-two action, which, which is not subject to review the secret, and it will not result in any significant adverse impact on the environment.
Okay, again, discussed, committee of the whole. Comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Adriano?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman George?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution fifty-two dash nineteen, P L fifty-one dash nineteen by Alderman Doherty, seconded by Alderman George, to authorize the mayor to sign and submit grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration, the F A A, for grant funding associated with the design portion of the runway, runway four dash twenty-two rehabilitation project and the design portion of the S R E build, uh, building pavement rehabilitation project.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Adriano?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman George?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
No.
Motion carries six to one.
I'll make them, uh, anything before we adjourn? Please.
Uh, I believe Larry is here because this Friday at, uh, nine o'clock, the Special Olympics will be leaving for competition. So I wish, uh, wish you guys good luck. I have great matches in first place.
Larry, what sport are you doing?
Bowling.
Bowling? What's new? Good luck.
Awesome.
Good luck.
Well, bring it, bring us home some trophies so the mayor, the mayor can give you a proclamation or a picture or a something, something. All right, good. Uh, not that, anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Say it.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. All in favor? Aye, opposed, we adjourn.